Wow, I almost missed it. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a moment of silence, please? Roll call, Corin.
Counselor Heising.
Yes, here.
Counselor Schneider.
Here.
Counselor Stickley.
Here.
Counsel President Steeritz.
Here.
Counsel Tiarina.
Here.
We have five members present, we have a quorum.
Counselor Chamberlain is excused from tonight's meeting. Okay, we have two sets of minutes, we have our Committee of the Whole and our council meeting from May 1st, and May 11th is the Committee of the Whole. Before we move forward on passing these, there's one itty-bitty change in the Committee of the Whole. Under Committee Reports, it would be the second paragraph, there's just a typo on the name, and that would be Nate Andre. So if we could pass the minutes with the change in that that council's aware of, so we can fix that in the minutes.
I will move to do that.
Second.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counsel Heising and segmented by Counsel Stickley. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have our illustrious Clinton Township trustees visiting and coming in for our annual joint meeting, so we will need a roll call to start this meeting.
Trustee Height.
Here.
Trustee Newenschwander.
Here.
And Rick Frye has an excused absence.
Arizona, went to Arizona.
It's always a step a deal.
Yeah.
Okay, you gotta get the rest of us.
Counselor Heising.
Yes.
Counselor Schneider.
Here.
Counselor Stickley.
Yes.
Counsel President Steeritz.
Here.
Counselor Tiarina.
Here.
We have seven members present, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. So we are here to reappoint Rick Frye to the Wasean Union Cemetery for the three-year term, since he's not here, we should make it a six-year term.
Make it a lifetime.
There you go. We could always put that in later. His term would go from January 1st, 2024, to January 1st, 2027. Can we get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Set it.
Motion to reappoint Rick Frye to the Wasean Union Cemetery for the three-year term of January 1st, 2024, to January 1st, 2027, moved by Counsel Stickley and segmented by Trustee Height. Any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Trustee Height?
Yes.
Trustee Newenschwander?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steeritz.
Yes.
Seven a's, zero nays, motion carries.
And before we shut, is there any more discussion on anything new with the trustees?
I forgot my notebook, so I'll bring it up next year.
Okay.
I will be here.
Well, we don't know yet.
We're gonna appoint you.
Okay, we'll need a motion to adjourn the annual joint meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the annual meeting.
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn this annual joint meeting, moved by Trustee Height and segmented by Counselor Tiarina. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
These are always so fun.
Especially when we know what we're doing. Last year, we were a little confused.
Well, we're getting this pretty much down after.
Pretty well got it. Have a good year.
Thanks, guys. Take care.
Thanks for coming in out of the field, Larry.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have a very nice proclamation that we want to recognize, our EMS Week Proclamation, and I am gonna read this just because I think it's important to read. We're going to designate the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Service Week, whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services provided by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Huner, Mayor of the Wasean, Ohio D, do recognize the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week. So, I just wanna say that I'm also very, very proud of our EMS and paramedic program that you have going here in Wasean, and continuing education, and what the city does to promote the continual education for our employees, I think is fantastic. It only benefits our citizens in Wasean and the district, so, or area, I should say. So, thank you for that. All right, did you have anything else you wanted to?
Yeah, we can. Met with civil service, Tony Drewett's gonna be coming onboard full-time first of June. That replaces Jared McCann, still leaves us with an opening, but that does fill the gap. He's gonna stay full-time with Mercy for now, but this'll be his primary job. He comes from the stroke unit and from flying with Lifeflight, so, very experienced, he's been part-time with us for several years, so, he's starting to slow down a little bit, kinda wants a place to call home, so, that's where he's gonna be. We talked about EMS Week, we're gonna do lunches and stuff throughout the week, so Monday, Wednesday, and Friday of that week, you guys are welcome to come out, Keith's grilling hot dogs and hamburgers and whatever.
As far as you know?
As far as I know, yes. And I just wanna say to Clinton Township, they're not here, but thank them for everything they do for us. They have a bulk of the fire apparatus downstairs, and they do an amazing job maintaining that for us, and that's what helps keep us successful as we are. And then, at the end of April, we did some training out at ODOT, and I got some video footage here, the staff's talking about maybe getting this out to Sky Cinema, the show before the movies and stuff.
The purpose of that is the fire behavior of both their heads.
You had one, 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 that type of missile. Four fires per person. Really, what's he thinking? This is what it's supposed to be. That's awesome. They're allowing to simulate basement fires, structure fires, and this.
I thought it was interesting, we see they're not shooting water right on the fire.
Oh, yeah.
How much does that hose sound?
I thought that was the beer itself, that was the problem.
Yeah, it's a two B.
And zero B is going to be the one.
Yeah, a couple of them are in there, they're coming back, two or three of them, just one.
And the reason, is he thinking of doing better?
Practicing technique, whole guy movement.
Tom said he'd have a video if he was here.
Unfortunately, we can't view any of his videos. Keith?
Well, I'm sorry, I still do not have a video for you, so you're gonna have to go without. Just an update from Thursday, the pool is full, we've got it running, and Tom is working on getting the, Tom Burkholder is working on getting the, okay, not this time, Tom Burkholder is working on getting the chemicals adjusted, so we will be ready for open day. The pool is almost fully booked on Saturdays already, and we haven't even opened up yet. I think there may be four or five slots open, but very few.
Has he started interviews and stuff? Got the interviews all done?
All done, people are ready to go. Want to thank the Fire Department for doing the CPR training for the lifeguards, and I'm not sure how many we got knocked out.
I don't know.
Quite a few knocked out on Saturday, they came in and got their CPR certification, and we will be working with them throughout the year for training out there as well, both for the Fire Department as well as for the lifeguards. North Park is almost completely finished, we will be meeting with Finance Committee after this for the monument and a few other items. Received a letter from Omni Fiber requesting that they will be giving video service, being a video service provider for the City of Wasean, so we will be, I've already sent them an email, but I need to get what Tom referenced, sending them the actual letter for the franchise fees that we have in place. And working on several sets of easements, one on the North Fulton Street project and another one for ODOT at the hybrid beacon crossing at the Walbeish Canyon. That's it, unless someone has any questions.
On the TV services, somebody asked me, is it gonna be streaming, or is it like a limited TV, or is it gonna be pretty much everything?
I'm not sure on that, I know like in Delta, I believe Windstream, their video service provider is Dish. They get it to the house, but it's actually provided by Dish, I'm not sure what Omni Fiber is going to provide on that. I'm hoping that here in the near future, they have a public meeting to let the public know what services they're gonna provide for the residents of Wasean.
I've had a couple approach me, Ray, the right switch.
Is Finley doing Omni as well? They're putting in.
I'm not sure if it's Omni Fiber or not, but I think Delta is also, has the, I believe they started in Delta and then they came over here.
My granddaughter gave the North Park playgrounds a tent.
A tent?
Aww.
Loved it.
I'm glad that's your idea.
Really, and the benches are nice, that wall's nice, it's pretty cool.
It's cool up there. And before I forget, Clem Cuttsley got another picture in the OWE calendar.
Oh, good.
So he is Mr. May this year of 2023. It's not him, it's a picture, it's a picture of the water reclamation plant, the work that we were doing on the clarifier, but he was chosen out of several hundred applicants on that, so, does nice work on this.
He also took some updated pictures for us to use at the, in our, these booklets here of North Park, so that we had them for the tree commission, and there was, a lot of people were really impressed with our parks when they were looking for it.
Nice.
He does a good job.
When did you, I say you were gonna do that hot dog burger grill up thing?
With them.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
And Friday's gonna be for all employees.
Okay, Friday.
At Worldary Park.
That's my pie day, I gotta make pies for Friday.
Which Friday?
Is it this coming Friday?
A week.
Twenty, twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth?
Excellent.
Twenty-first to the twenty-sixth is appreciation.
Yep, twenty-sixth.
Yes, twenty-sixth.
I'll still be on time with those.
Eleven thirty-four.
Vacation?
My granddaughter's great.
Okay, sounds good. And Jamie is gone today, so.
I really don't have anything.
Nothing?
Nothing.
No pie charts, nothing?
Well, I had the video ready to go, but when I tried to hook it up, Phil's was in the way, so, we're gonna have to wait till next time.
No signal there.
Phil's in the way?
It's sorta like, did something to my signal, see, week or no signal.
Must be digging a new hole out front of ourselves.
Yeah, that's it. Omni guys, cut me off.
All right, moving on then, Committee Reports, we have Safety and Code.
That's me. So, we met to discuss the golf carts, and we had multiple residents come in about legalizing golf carts on the roads and driving on the streets, the residents expressed their opinions on the city, changing their laws in favor of allowing golf carts on the streets, it was a really good meeting, and, you know, we kinda discussed the concerns that we had as far as like Shute goes, and different things like that, and they understood our concerns, and it was, there was a general agreement that the golf carts should stay clear of Shute Avenue, you know, one of the people that attended were hoping that Shute would be allowed in that because they wanted to go to Walmart on the golf carts, and I gave an example of, you know, if you're in Walmart and you're waiting to use the self-checkout and somebody's taking forever, you're getting frustrated, you're getting mad, and you're just like, go, 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 it's gonna be the same way with golf cart on Shute, you're gonna be, go, 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 so, but then, after discussing it, we were like, yeah, Shute would be totally out of the question. So we agreed to take this back to the council and kinda hear everyone's opinion before making a recommendation, and just kinda talk through what we thought as a whole, and so no action was taken from that committee meeting, so we're gonna have to schedule another one from that.
Okay, was discussion at Committee of the Whole just?
Yeah, so we did discuss at Committee of the Whole, kind of, you know, general feelings about it, we had, I think Chief Custer was absent during that time.
I was in a convention.
Yeah, yeah, so, Chief Chitlin was here, Keith was here, and then all of the council members were here, and so, we kinda got a feel for the general consensus of what people were thinking, so now we're kinda just still, the jury's out, Mayor, the jury's out.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah.
I'm glad you guys are really thinking about it, 'cause it is something that gets approached a lot, usually in the warmer months, it comes up a lot where people want to do this, but, you know, it's always scary when you try something new like this, so, good discussion.
I mean, when I, when I got here, I don't know whose it is, there was a ATV parked here, and it might have been one of the trustees or something that was cruising it, so, what's that?
Ivan, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so, one of the things that was mentioned by the people was, they're like, you know, it's like, if you're in the club, you can drive on the roads with your things, but if you're not in the club, you can't, and so, that's kind of their perception of it, which is a good perception of the community as a whole, so, we're just taking all that into consideration as we think, so.
Sounds good, all righty, thank you.
Yep.
And that was it for that, so no action. Tree Commission?
Uh, the tree, that's me, the tree commission, and it's kinda water under the bridge, 'cause all we did was discuss getting ready for Tree USA on May 9th, and so we had the Tree USA, I think it went without a hitch, I mean, it was, I don't think anything could've been better, I mean, the food is great, Nate Andre was a great speaker, Lori Camp did the MC, I mean, I don't think anybody complained about anything, it was just a, it was fun, I liked it, I wasn't surprised. City workers helped set the tables up, and they saved us a couple hours cleaning up afterwards, you know, they all pitched in and put the tables up, and the tree commission probably averages about sixty-five years old, so, and I'm probably the youngest one, so you can tell me that, so, we would've took us forever to pick up those tables and chairs, so, it went off, it went off great, so.
I thought it was very well received by different communities, we had Finley, Toledo Commissions, and like Brian brought their commission and their mayor, we had the mayor of Bostoria there, there was quite a few mayors that came, a lot of awards were given.
I bet there was twenty-five cities in that at least.
Yeah, I think Wasean was the only one representing Fulton County as far as mayors, which I thought, you know, short as dry, and it would've been nice to see some more, but it really was well received, I heard a lot of positive feedback, and that the tree commission did an amazing job, and our parks, when, like I said, they looked, and then we really gave a lot of recognition to the public works on how they take care of their day, and work so side by side with the tree commission, and it was good, it was a great, a great day, it went fast, and there was only one representative from Mount Pilgrim, he was on the tree commission, he was ninety-two years old, and he needed his microphone, and he wanted to talk, and he wanted to tell everybody to start volunteering their time, and it was a really, it was funny, but very compassionate at the same time. Was he ninety-two?
Pretty old.
Yeah. Well, I started coughing, and we were like, oh boy, but he did okay, he did go back.
He was fine.
He had thirty years.
He moved faster than I did, so I can't.
Thirty-some years, Rick Frye has thirty-two years, and there was another one with thirty-nine years on the tree commission, and this guy definitely had many, so, that was, that was neat to see, people have pride in us, and it was really exciting to see what everybody does in their communities to get the rewards, so, it was nice.
Yeah, and I thought Nate did a great job, he spoke for like forty-five minutes, I guess he's done three-hour ones before, so.
Well, he spoke very well, but then people wanted to talk more after.
Oh, yeah, people talked about another half hour.
And they were lined up at his booth, so that, that's really good, that it was informative about that, and everything that he does out there. Good stuff, good meeting, and kudos to the tree commission for all your hard work. Okay, and then after that, we have a very, very busy park board.
That's me. It's not too busy. So, park board met and discussed pickleball courts, the park board recommends that we do all six pickleball courts, and Keith has got some figures of about ninety-six thousand dollars, that's without a fence, for all six of them. So the recommendation, they voted, park board voted to move forward, so I am bringing it to council, and I'll probably have to come up with finance also.
Is it ninety-six without?
Without the fence.
Okay.
Probably with the fence, I think we had it figured out in one twenty-five, one twenty-six thousand, but that's not, you can't hold it to that because.
Right.
Fence steel and everything else is variable.
Are we convinced that pickleball is here to stay? I mean, is this like a long-term, it's not a bad?
People that play. I mean, every community that I've talked to says it's growing, and the courts, they have to add more courts, and, yeah.
They had to explain it to Harold that they weren't really pickles that were playing the game.
I was a little confused about whether we were throwing pickles back.
Yeah, I know.
But I got it all straightened, and golf is not golf.
It's not golf.
It's frisbee. Yeah.
Anyhow, that's the one motion that is coming forward, do you wanna finish the rest of the report?
Yes.
And then move forward?
Yes.
All right, so, secondly, is the grass and Keith has mowed, the public works has mowed an area where the new grass is gonna go for the, at Homecoming, and twelve feet wide is gonna be the grass area, I think Nate Andre and them is gonna spray it, or the city's gonna spray it.
Soil and water conservation is heading that up, they're gonna.
Pete Carr.
Yep, they're gonna spray it, they're gonna seed it, and take the lead on even disking it up and taking care of it, of course.
Probably with the.
I'll be next.
Yes. Laura is gonna be with, involved in that too?
That's where we came up with the.
The area?
The location, the area, and the nature path going through it.
Between Laura Camp and Pete Carr, right?
Laura Camp, Pete Carr, even got the cross-country coach involved to make sure that it means as well, so.
So our finance director's involved also?
Well.
What are you talking about?
I think Ed Nossinger was.
Yeah, Ed was, Ed was.
He's done them before, so he kinda.
He was adamant on making sure that it wasn't straight lines, and.
Yeah.
So everybody's on board with that, Mayor?
Okay.
The next thing is the Homecoming Park, and we have a businessman in the community that is donating ninety thousand dollars, and the playground equipment was ordered, I was told yesterday, so, that will be coming too with a donation, and he's donating the whole thing, so, and then the monument is going to Finance Committee to see what we're gonna do with the monument at North Park. The only other thing, I can thank everybody that we're gonna end up with porta potties at other parks that don't have bathroom facilities for our residents.
Like North Park.
Huh?
Like North Park.
Like North Park, South Park, Walbeish.
No peeing on a statue anymore.
And I think it'll be a good thing for our community and residents of the community, so, the only thing we have to vote on is to vote for the pickleball courts, Mayor.
AED units?
AED.
I didn't think we had a.
You have the recommendation.
Motion passed that they would put them in the park, so.
At Vito Park?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
I didn't think we had a vote on that.
That's what I thought, too.
Okay, well, to accept.
Are we gonna put that in with it? I thought that was.
All right, why don't we, why don't we go back to the pickleball courts and do that separate, and then accept the park, the rest of the minutes as a whole?
Well, there are two recommendations by the committee.
Back that on the agenda.
Huh? There's two recommendations by the committee.
Which ones?
The E.
The A.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, motion to adjourn, all in.
So.
Okay, so, both of those, all right, let's do pickleball courts first, okay?
I would make a motion, Mayor, accept pickleball courts.
I'll second.
So, that will be coming too with a donation, and he's donating the whole thing. So, and then the monument is going to Finance Committee to see what we're gonna do with the monument at North Park. The only other thing, I can thank everybody that we're gonna end up with porta-parts at porta-potties. At other parks that don't have bathroom facilities for our residents.
Like North Park.
Huh?
Like North Park.
Like North Park, South Park, Walbeish. So... No peeing on a statue anymore. And I think it'll be a good thing for our community and residents of the community. So, the only thing we have to vote on is to vote for the pickleball courts, Mayor.
AED units?
I didn't think we had a vote on that.
You have the recommendation of the...
Motion passed that they would put them in the park, so, yeah.
At Biddle Park?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
I didn't think we had a vote on that. I thought we were just gonna go on that.
That's fine.
Okay, well, to accept...
Are we gonna put that in with it? I thought that was gonna be...
All right, why don't we, why don't we go back to the pickleball courts and do that separate, and then accept the park, the rest of the minutes as a whole?
Well, there aren't two recommendations by the committee.
The agenda?
There's two recommendations by the committee.
Which ones is it?
The A.
The A.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, motion to adjourn. Okay, so, both of those. All right, let's do pickleball courts first.
Okay.
Okay? So...
I would make a motion, Mayor, accept the pickleball courts.
I'll second that.
I'll second that, too.
I'll third it.
Brandon wants to learn the game.
Recommendation to move forward with six pickleball courts at Homecoming Park moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council President Stearitz. Any discussion?
I have played it.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council President, Council President Stearitz?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Tirina?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
All right. And then, second, we're gonna go into the AED units at Biddle Park, which I think is a great idea.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that one.
All right. I got one. All right. You're right, honor brand.
Recommendation to proceed with the implementation of AED units at Biddle Park moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council Tirina. Any discussion? Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Tirina?
Yes.
Council President Stearitz?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
And then, I'm just gonna ask council to accept the rest of the minutes of the park board, I guess, and really no action on it, but I guess as written, since they were divided.
I will move on that.
I don't think we normally move to approve the minutes.
I know, but they were separated. We got two out and then the rest of the minutes, so we don't need to move on those.
I don't think so.
All right, leave it go.
I rescind my movement.
All right. 'Cause the one thing I'm reading in there is that the one minute states that they were in favor to move forward, we just need to take it to Finance, and if Finance approves, I guess we'll bring it back.
Yeah.
For another read on that. Okay. I guess that's it on that, and, let's see, nothing under first, second, and third reading, right? So, I have new business, we talked about the Tree Commission. The only other thing I wanted to do was thank our Wasean High School FFA department for coming in and graciously donating students for the morning to, for businesses. I think they were out at the airport, they did some weeding out there.
They are.
And then they planted and helped plant the WBT people and people within the city. We had some Hannah from the Fire Department, and Brooke, and a couple of Public Works people, and we planted all the downtown plants and the flowers that were donated by the WBT or funded by the WBT, the whole city building, and the swimming pool, and South Park chamber, the big planter, all of them in like about two and a half, three hours. And we, they really did an amazing job, and they, they were ready to go. They brought their tools, they were ready to go, and I can't think of enough, 'cause it would've taken us a day and a half to get all of that done. So, very grateful for their help and for Public Works and for the employees to make that move forward, and now we just gotta keep them watered and fertilized and make it look pretty all summer. So, thank you for that. Anything else under new business? Anything under old business?
I've got just a question on old business. The letter that we got for the field next to Walmart, did we resolve that with them and let them know that it's not in the city?
Didn't have a name on it.
Oh, it didn't have any? So they just sent it?
Yeah. Oh, my. Oh, Bert Drummer went out to Walmart and talked to them about it, and they do send someone out about every three months, they send people out there.
Oh, okay.
But it's, yeah, but it's not our property.
Right, yeah, there's nothing we can do.
If you guys know of anybody that needs service hours or a group or a church, I've had church groups come and tell me, but again, when you put them out there, it's not our property to allow them to go out there, so you gotta kind of guide them into the right...
Yeah. Then a farmer plants, you're not gonna be able to walk out.
Right. You can't walk in it, and that's important.
Could you put a sign out there like you did with...
This is not ours!
City is not responsible. Time to learn your...
Have we ever brought up sculptures? We have...
Oh, no.
Sculptures.
Yeah, under new and old business, that was in the minutes, but the sculptures, if you have not walked down Biddle Park...
They look fantastic.
Yeah.
They are amazing, and I, I just love it. It just seems like you go here and this is happening, and you got a new park on North Park, and you got flowers, and it's just like Wasean waking up in the winter, and I just love that. That is, Richard Morgan is his name, correct?
Yeah, I think he donated a couple of extra ones.
Did he?
Yeah, I think...
They look good. They look really good, and...
So, I think we had total of six.
Wow.
I wanna get a picture with you and the guitar.
Yeah, there you go. That's a good idea. No, he's a drummer.
Yeah, he's thinking Elvis.
He can take his sticks. Yeah, they look good. Okay. Anything else? If not, let's pay the bills, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve and pay the bills as presented, moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council Tirina. Any discussion? Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Tirina?
Yes.
Council President Stearitz?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?